No, I mean, when I like it keeps it to me. Yeah.
Oh, I see. I didn't even know that was the thing. Didn't even occur to me.
Yeah, it doesn't happen very often, but.
You were.
How do you like the new view?
Ryan, can I see you?
My.
Yeah. Yeah, just let me know. You can shoot me text and let me know what it is.
The time is four thirty P. M. The City of Pelican Rapids Council meeting in twenty thirteen, July twenty twenty one is called order. I'd ask at this time, if you have not signed in on the clipboard on the back table, please do so before you leave. And also, if you have a cell phone, please put that on vibrate. I will call member Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markout.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
Mayor Brad Fraser.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you this evening to our council chambers. We have a new format set up here. It's different than before. Welcome all also those that are on Zoom and also our council meetings will be seen on Wednesday evenings on channel fourteen. A few announcements for the next month. Saturday, July twenty fourth is Art and Park with both Chairman Neil Peterson Park. July twenty eighth is ten to eleven A. M. Conversations with the Mayor in historic City Hall. Seventh of August is the fly-in drive-in at Lion Field at our community airport. August seventh is also the community garden tour around our area. And Tuesday, August tenth at four thirty P. M. Is our next city council meeting. We have an agenda item on the zinging event to cancel the last council meeting in July. We'll talk about that later. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, but all please stand for the closing of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens comments. Anyone here for citizens comments? Yes, did you just step up to the microphone and state your name?
Hi, my name is Lily Sugimura. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the summer intern for the local foods, local places. And I've been working with Pelican Market and doing, helping with some of the advertising. I've put up some of the flyers for Pelican Market around the businesses. And I've helped with the website, which is up now, so you can look at that. And then I've also helped with the Facebook page. And I'm also trying to build the relationship between the community garden and Pelican Market. So.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Citizens comments? Anyone else? Seeing nobody, let's move on. Item number three, agenda additions and deletions. I have four additions. Item number sixteen is cancel the city council meeting of twenty seven, July twenty twenty one. Item sixteen is cancel the city council meeting of twenty seven, July twenty twenty one. Item number seventeen is Colony Apartments Pay Request, number four. Item seventeen is Colony Pay Request, number four. Item number eighteen is Resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven. Item number eighteen is Resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven, which the council had before them yesterday evening. Item number nineteen is certification of city classification and support for acquisition of H. R. A. Or you can just label it as item number nineteen is certification of H. R. A. Any other additions or deletions? Any other additions or additions? I have some questions about the street project, so that can probably handle the street report. Any other additions or deletions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda of those additions?
Oh.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the session. Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent. If you have not agreed with those items. Item number four A is approval of minutes, a council meeting of June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Item four B is approval of accounts payable listing. Item four C is Pelican River Peasants Forever slash VFW Post five two five two, August twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Item four D one is police chief report, which is in your cabinet. Item four D two is financial report, which is in your cabinet. I'll move with consent agenda. Second. Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the session. Motion carried. Item number five is city attorney Lindsay Forstgen. Our city attorney is here this evening. And Lindsay, if you would like to introduce yourself.
Sure.
Glad to have you with us.
Yeah, so I just talked to Don Solga a little bit, and I told him I could stop by and just introduce myself. I've met Steve and Steve. I don't think I've met Kurt or Kevin. So Lindsay Forstgen from the Kreckelberg Law Firm. I'm happy to have been offered this position, looking forward to it. And I think that's all I'm here to do, is give you a brief introduction. So.
Also any questions? Will you put her on the spot?
That's all right.
Do that later, I think.
All right. Well, my contact's been Don Solga, so if anything comes up, just let me know. I'm here. So, nice to meet you.
Item number six is street report. Super desert rivals.
I'll try to be that quick, too, but that's nice. The street side of things, we really have been just doing some street maintenance here and there, maintaining. Got a couple potholes that I told you about earlier, that we tore up some asphalt, that hoping I can still get that patched up yet this summer. But again, second year in a row, our dust guard got down before the end of June, which is really nice. So that was done here just the second week in June, actually. Our crack seal project, there's about one hundred and twenty-two blocks, is scheduled to start next Tuesday, the twentieth. So you'll see crack seal material, a crew doing, doing a bunch of that. So that will be done. And just another FYI for anybody that's interested, July twenty first through the twenty-fifth is the PPG parachute ultralight fly-in out at the airport. That public is welcome to go out. They really encourage you to come out and just catch them. They're there. It's usually the Friday and Saturday and Sunday. So they start the twenty-first coming, and which is, I believe, a Wednesday. So it'd be the twenty-third that they're out there. And they'll be camping again, like they have another year. So but they like to fly early in the morning and late in, late in the evening, evidently when the wind's down. So if anybody's interested.
What's early in the morning?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not one of those that flies those, so I don't know. Don't know. Then actually, I know Kevin said he had a couple, couple of questions, which we can address. But Cassa ninety-six and one hundred, along with the Colony Apartments, has all gotten their second lift and striped the way they're supposed to be. There's just a few things left on the punch list for them to finish on, on both projects. But for the most part, they're, they're complete. So Parks End of it, the, the pool has been busy since it opened the twenty-second. Been, been good amount of kids around there each day, so that's good. The first session of swimming lessons is, I believe, ends this week. And they've had a, a good amount of kids, too. I didn't get the, the numbers from Abby today, but seems like they have kids in each group, so that's good. And otherwise, we've been super busy since the end of June into, to now with all the events that have been in the parks. So we've been trying to do up the parks and keep them clean for Friendship Festival and Cars in the Park and the Pelican Fest and, and stuff like that. So we have one more event at the end of the month. So with Art in the Park that will hopefully go off without a snag, too. So other than that, I don't have any, anything else. So any questions?
So crack, first, I didn't have this other question. For crack seal, do you guys, are you doing a certain area of town?
It pretty much stretches all over, because I, I missed a year last year. And so it pretty much goes all over in each section of town. So it'll be everywhere. And that's anticipation for a pretty decent sized seal coat next year. So.
So then, so I have two questions for the, the street project in twenty twenty-four. One is the scope of the infrastructure replacement. We're, we're replacing sewer and blocks.
Yes.
From like stoplight to stoplight, or South Town to.
That is, that is, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from County Highway Nine all the way to Faith Church. So that, that is where our infrastructure is all cast in clay. Once we get beyond that, to the north and beyond it to the south, we go to PVC on both water and sewer.
How about a one oh eight?
And, okay, one oh eight's also. So one oh eight, from each stoplight, west going out to Third Street Northwest. And on one oh eight east, I believe we're going to Sixth Street. And with that, I'm, I'm still trying to get them to, to get me a loop out to Anne Lane, but it's, we're, we're still working on that. So but that, and, and along with that, they're going to replace their storm sewer also.
Okay. So then, before I kind of leave you to the second question. So at the last meeting, we were, we were talking about, we've only been talking about the fifty-nine. And I'm assuming that's the highway fifty-nine.
Yes.
So when we were presented the project that you were, you were talking about out to Colony and out to Anne Lane, is that all part of the same project? Or is that?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four, fifty-nine, and the next?
No, that's all part of the same project. What, what, what they meant a week ago today. Yes, and, and discussed the one oh eights, as far as that goes. I was not part of that meeting. So if Don can maybe answer that, more of that.
Sure, yeah. It's all part of the same project. The, the problem is, what they're looking at is because it's so large, and a lot of assets do with our infrastructure, it's going to be very hard for them to complete it all in one construction season. So they're trying to look at the best way to do it and how much of the next construction season. But the one thing they're, and that's still to be, the logistics are still to be figured out by then, Don, but they, they want to really concentrate the first construction season on Highway fifty-nine through the downtown area, all of that, so that by the end of that construction season, it's passable. And then, and then the one awaits, the next construction season is possible. But we're no more about that as they start talking about that.
So then, so if my math is right, if we start twenty twenty-four and it's a two-year project, it would end in twenty twenty-six. And then they're talking about another twenty twenty-six project on one oh eights also?
That's out to the interstate, though. That won't include us.
For the, for the next few years afterwards, I know that, I think they're going south to interstate, they're going west to interstate also. And I don't know if it's twenty-six and twenty-seven, or twenty-six and twenty-eight. But that, I think, that, that work is just kind of a middle overlay type stuff, I believe. So it's not.
Right. They won't be adding anything to that.
Yeah, and they're not going to be shutting down coal lanes to do that stuff unless it's very temporary type stuff.
Any more questions for Brian?
How many days a week is a pool? Is it seven?
Yes. So far, we have been staffed so that everybody's able to work seven days. Yep.
I think early on, there was a Sunday or something that they.
There was a Sunday, yeah. That was, I think that was the holiday. They had some, she had some trouble getting kids to, to work. So.
Do you have a date that might be the last day?
I, I would, yeah. We've, we've looked at it. And right now, it's, it's tentatively the twentieth. And that'd depend on when kids are going back to school, when they're, when they're starting college. Everybody starts different. And that's when we tend to lose them, and then when sports start. So that right now is, is kind of my target goal. So.
Any more questions for Brian? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the board? Second. Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the session. Motion carried.
Perfect. Thank you.
Item number seven is twenty twenty-one legislative session update. We have our Senator Bill Eng for us, and us here this evening. Take our ways.
Thank you, and good evening. And again, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to come out and, and a yearly visit with, with the folks from Pelican Rapids. And again, I will have to repeat myself, not too many city council meetings, or not too many city councils have us come out. However, you've been very diligent about that, and I'm very happy to be here and give you at least a light overview of, of what happened this year in, oh, boy, I guess in the last two years of, since COVID, we've had, as you can imagine, and yourselves as well, a real challenging time, getting a bonding budget, budget out the year before this. And now this year, of course, the biannual budget year, which is generally the five-month period that we spend in St. Paul. Well, it seems like we're going into overtime almost all the time anymore. But nevertheless, we finally did finish on, I believe it was about a week ago, the Senate actually went a few extra days longer to make sure that, we, we wanted to make sure that the governor signed the bills. The reason for that kind of, type of a delay is just basically a formality. If, if you get to the end of the session and all the bills are not signed by the governor, the governor has fourteen days to actually sign those bills. We decided to stay on until those bills were signed, to make sure they were. So a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of good work went into the bills this year. The state, state government, as you all know, COVID nineteen brought a lot of federal dollars to the state of Minnesota. As a matter of fact, in my fifteen years being in the Senate, I've never seen anything like that, quite frankly. As you know, we started out with a, with a budget surplus, which was, which was good. I mean, I remember eleven and twelve, when we had a five billion dollar deficit. This year, we had a one point, I think it was five or six billion dollar surplus. And then along come another eight billion dollars from the federal government. And that's still coming in in different segments. Most of that money, of course, went to the COVID, you know, relief fund. The governor had total say as to where that went, through his commissioners, through public health, as well as public HHS. So a lot of dollars were spent. So part of our budget this year was, and we put it in there to, to, to make sure there is an audit that's going to be done, to make sure all these dollars. And we have no reason to believe that they're not being spent properly. The federal dollars always come attached, as you can, you can about imagine. They have strings attached to them. And we just want to make sure all those, those strings that were attached, that, that weren't broken. So we're going to be doing that. We can give you a report on that, or I'm sure you'll probably get one through your city, through your city lobbyists and whatnot from, from your report. As you, as you all know, the House is, is Democrat, of course, along with Democrat governor, and, and the Senate is controlled by the Republicans. We often, often, I'm saying about eight to ten times, tried to take away the governor's power, only because we, part of our, part of the Constitution says we have the, to appropriate the money, the legislature, legislature. So we, we fought that and fought that. And finally, this last month, the House finally voted with us. And that was, that was the holdup, was the vote. The, the House was not willing to do that. You probably heard a lot of dust up about that. But nevertheless, we, we tried to do that. And we think we would have been able to appropriate that money in a timely fashion. We just disagreed with the, the way the governor handled it. And I think that's probably common in some other states as well. So I don't think that's anything common. We do have a bill, however, Never Again, it's called. And this can work, work both ways, depending upon whether you have a Democrat or a Republican in there. In order to get, as some states have, where if the governor declares emergency powers, which the legislature has given him to the authority to do that, in order to go an extra thirty days beyond that, they have to get both bodies, both the House and the Senate, to approve. And we think that's reasonable. And again, doesn't depend, depends upon who the governor is. So it's really, it's really should be a bipartisan effort. And that'll be coming, I would expect, this next session. We'll have some discussion on that. Again, the budgets, you know, unfortunately, I, I think it's unfortunate, the, with the surplus that we did have, and the, the economy going as well as it has in Minnesota, as well as all the other dollars that were coming in. Nevertheless, the Walls Administration, along with the House, wanted to raise taxes and, and fees. So we, at the end of the day, we passed a tax bill where there were no increase in taxes, actually a one billion dollar cut. The PPP money that you know that came into businesses, and, and that was federally taxed, you know, tax-free. But however, Minnesota had an opportunity to tax those dollars, and that seemed to be counterproductive, at least to us. So we fought to get that back. Not get, get it back, we just didn't receive it. And so we, we consider that a, a pretty big win, I think, for the, for our economy here in Minnesota. So they don't have to pay, the businesses don't have to pay state tax on that particular program. E twelve, we had a, it was the biggest budget ever. We passed it, per, per people gains were very, very large, actually. However, the real key to this was, and you've heard about the social studies, you've also heard about some of this other stuff that's coming forward, the school boards are, are looking at, and it's being pushed. There's an agenda out there that I certainly don't agree with. And I think once people realize just what it is, they don't agree as well. But we, we managed to fight that down in our K twelve budget. And so the policy, generally, we don't mess with a whole lot of policy. But along with money comes policy, as you well know. But we were able to, to stop that education piece that, that I, I guess I would say, we would say the progressive folks wanted us to move forward with. So you'll hear a lot more discussion about that coming up as well. It was the largest increase in, in fifteen years. But of course, public safety, as you know, transportation was good. Transportation was a, was a, I think, a, a real success story. There again, there was, suggested a lot of fees to be increased. We, we said no. We could hardly come home and tell our constituents that with all the money that was, was in government, especially in light of the surplus, we could hardly come home and say we were going to raise fees. So we did not do that. But we put out a very, I think, a responsible transportation budget. That's followed up, of course, by, or actually came after the bonding bill that was the biggest ever last year, where there's a lot of funding that went out to local roads and bridges, as well as highways. So we, you know, we've been doing very well. I mean, I, I think the, you know, the counties have received money, cities have received money, townships have received some aid. And, and I think things are, are infrastructure-wise going along very well. You talked earlier about the sewer and, and clean water. And we did a, a large amount, actually, in the bonding bill, large, bigger than ever for, for clean water infrastructure to help out small towns. And I hope, you know, I'm assuming that you have applied for some of those dollars, and I, I, you know, because those are sitting out there. And, and we tried to come up with more. Actually, with LCCMR this year, we actually put together for rural, put, put together money, and that's the gambling money. That's the legislative gambling money, the scratch-off money. We put out a hundred and thirty million dollars for a two-year budget this year. And part of that money is a new program going to rural septics. So those, there's about, there's about, boy, I think it's over a hundred thousand or so, so need out there. Rural septics, folks just can't afford to do it. This is going to give them a little, a little, a little bump so they can get that done, because we know that very well, has something to go, to go along with the, the pollution in our rivers and streams. And so that, that was a real plus, I think, for rural Minnesota. And we're just now starting today. I mentioned to the mayor, I chaired the meeting, or chaired the committee today, and we actually had fifteen projects come forward. And on Thursday, we'll have fifteen more. I think we have a total of ninety before we, we're done. And that particular budget going out is about seventy million dollars. And that's not legacy money. That's not to be concerned, you know, confused with legacy money. Legacy money is about seven hundred million dollars a year. So Minnesotans obviously care about their environment. And, and I think it's our responsibility as legislators to see that it goes to the right direction, and it doesn't go wandering off where, where some public money seems to wander once in a while. So I chair the environment committees. You may or may not know, we passed that bill. Again, boat fees were, were the big hot topic, as well as California car emissions. You may have heard something about that. That's a, a governor's rule authority that was given to the governors back in sixty-nine, I believe it was, by the legislature, to go ahead and do rulemaking, if they wanted to, to do that without the legislative input. Our governor, along with the commissioner, had been doing that for the last couple of years. And where the real dust-up came there was, is that we were going to compare Minnesota cars with California cars when we were talking about car emissions. And, and obviously, if you think about that, that's, that's, that's not really, didn't really make a whole lot of sense. Actually, the California standards, the way it sounded, were going to be even more stringent than the federal standards. And so we fought that and fought that. But nevertheless, the governor said, no, I'm not going to give that up. So that's moving forward. You should know that. Electric cars are a thing in the future, and they're, they're already happening. I mean, we already see electric cars. Not a lot of them, but you, you do see them. You're seeing stations being put up. We had some infrastructure money for that, because we know that's coming. We know it's going to happen. It's just we haven't been able to figure out how we're going to tax the electric car versus getting gas tax from everybody else that has gas vehicles. We haven't figured out what that formula will be. So that's going to be an interesting discussion coming up. So with that, I, I did not raise, we did not raise the fees for boats. I think that's an encouraging note. That would have been a very significant amount of money. We did fund the, the parks and trails, as you know, to where they were satisfied. And, and so public safety was the, probably the biggest concern of mine, for obvious reasons. You, all you have to do is go home and turn on the news, and you'll see it again. It, the, the crime rate in the metro area is just absolutely exploding, and we all probably know why. I don't have to, I don't have to get into as to, you know, what my thoughts are. However, some of my thoughts have been public, and I've stood by them with my history of being in law enforcement. I, I, I know what, generally, what cops are up against. And of course, the George Floyd incident sparked a, a whole new era of, of everything when it comes to public safety, nationwide, I might say, as you well know. And so what happened there, what happened there is the House came with a bill that wanted to basically take away all the tools from law enforcement. And the Chair, Chair Limer, who's been on Judiciary Chair for years from Maple Grove, held tight and strong. I was on that particular committee, and we held, held strong. They had, I think it was three hundred and some pages of policy that they wanted changed. And we ended up compromising with a couple of policies that the police organizations were willing to go along with, which I know, actually, really don't have a whole lot to do with, with giving anything up. So there's some real trying times when it comes to our public's safety. Now, we don't, I don't think we, we experience that out here in rural Minnesota. And that's been my big challenge, is talking with local senators from the metro area. And you can imagine the difference. I mean, you, you, you see the difference. You know the difference. And when we paint the whole state with one big broad brush when it comes to police, police, as well as I, I understand now, you've got West Central Drug Task Force coming in, we can't, we can't take away those tools over one or two mistakes that were made very publicly, made. And frankly, you know, there, there's a lot of people that are still crying for justice. Well, there's a, there's an officer who created this whole mess, and, and he's now spending, I think, the best part of his life in prison. So there are, there are means to take care of bad cops. And I'm not going to tell you that there aren't bad cops. I'm not going to tell you there's, all, all our legal people in the state of Minnesota are all in the up and up. Or, quite frankly, senators or House or representatives. all in the up and up, or quite frankly, senators or House of Representatives. You're going to have some bad eggs, that there's a policy, there's one way to take care of it, whether it be elections or criminal investigations. And it has worked in the past, this happened to take off as a, as a very horrible incident, no question about it. I would never say that that officer was in the right, but nevertheless, we just don't throw, as they say, everybody out with the baby out with the bathwater. So, I'm very, very pleased that we were able to move forward with this. There was a lot of folks down in the metro area that aren't very pleased. However, it's very clear to me and I will repeat this time and time again, they have a Minneapolis metro problem with public safety, not a Minnesota problem. And they have to fix what's going on down there. Again, Roseau County, Kitson County, Otter Tail County should not be affected by, by new regulations that they, they feel that they have to have in order to accomplish public safety. So, we're looking forward to some tough times ahead, I think, when it comes to public safety. And I hope and I pray that all this racism thing, all this stuff that keeps to be, seems to be coming up and exploding here and there, that's not part of my thought process when I took the oath to protect the rights of everybody when I was a sheriff, as well as now I am a senator. So, we need to move beyond this and get things going in the right place and order and we are all Minnesotans, our governor says we're one Minnesota. So, we all need to start thinking about that. And any questions? I would love to entertain questions if you have any. If you've got any issues that are really nasty, there's a county commissioner here that you can ask for, for those kind of questions? I don't have a House member to pick on tonight, so.
I had kind of heard somewhere that there was possibility that you guys might have a small special session later in the year to look at some capital projects.
We really need another special session.
Yeah, I know, I know.
The special session, I think they're talking about, I mean, I have a caucus now, I was just on the phone with, with our caucus staff and we're going to be meeting on the 20, oh boy, 21st, I think, coming up, we're going to have a caucus, I think we're going to be talking about that. And what it is, and I talked about it earlier, money's coming in from the feds and these dollars are for frontline workers. I think there's a $250 billion appropriation that has to be appropriated and there's now a committee working on that as to who are the frontline workers. We all know that the medical folks were, who are essential, obviously, police were, as well as grocery stores. I mean, we can go on and on and on, where do you cut the line off? That's where the discussion will come in. But, I think that's what they're talking about when they're caught.
So, you guys pretty much, capital projects are all done until next regular session?
Oh, yeah. There's no, there was no bonding bill, as you know, but there, I'm looking forward to a very robust bonding bill next year. In fact, the numbers came out today that our forecast has already put us up in a $2.8 billion surplus, so that's, that's good news. That's real good news. So, I know you have some capital projects in the bonding bill, I know you have one in particular. I talked to the mayor earlier about that and I'm monitoring that very, you know, very closely, obviously, and I've talked with the Chair. The Chair is former Majority Leader Tom Bach, as you know, from the other side of the aisle. That's kind of an interesting twist in the, in the, in the politics in itself, but nevertheless, Senator Tomassoni and Senator Bach are now caucusing with us and it's been a real good relationship. And Senator Bach knows the importance of bonding and knows the importance also of local projects, so.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is we went to the legislature two years in a row and then turned down two times and as we get turned down and we have to wait, the cost of that project continues to go up.
Sure, of course.
So, we have it, in a bonding request, but I don't know.
That's the park you're talking about, the water park?
Yeah, but I don't know that we can wait because you guys aren't going to give us more money than we're asking for and the cost of that project is going to continue to go up, so we're between rock and hard.
Yeah, and I understand that and I, I would have to say that a lot of bonding bills go to maybe three, even four years before they get approved. But, that's not to say that that should happen for Pelican Rapids, I'm just saying that that's not uncommon. When you're talking, and I know you, you folks are doing a great job, I've seen the numbers, tremendous job in raising money and I would continue to do that because that makes it more appealing. But, if you raise enough to make the whole project, I get what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to come up with some dollars this next bonding session, so. I thought maybe so this year, but we turned out there, we just got to the end of the session and they said we weren't going to do any bonding, so. Yeah.
Any other questions?
But, don't go away. Sir.
Is, has these cars become more fuel-efficient as gas tax money for the state of Minnesota going down?
It's not going down. Is it, oh, I'm sorry, of course it is, I mean, you're making the point that it's going down, yes, yeah, you're right.
So, how fast is that going down and how's it going to affect?
You know, I don't know, I don't know the exact numbers, but our Chairman, Chair Scott Newman, along with the House Chair from down in the metro, I know they're talking a lot about that, they're talking also about the electric cars, how that's going to fit in. We still think and we, you know, the sales tax for automobile repair and all this, you know, that kind of stuff, we think that should be included. That certainly helps out, but that also creates a dark, you know, an empty hole over here. But nevertheless, I think that's appropriate. I mean, if you drive a car, you should, you know, have to pay for that. I think there's going to come a time, I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that we're not going to be, you know, looking at raising taxes, there's going to be a time when we're going to have to do that. To keep up with the infrastructure, the beauty, I think great infrastructure we have in our state. But, not 20 cents in one, one whole year like the governor had, that was a little over the top, especially again, that, you know, when we had the money to put in the budget to actually come up with a real good bonding bill without, without having to do that. So, we're going to hold the line as long as we can, however, we don't want to drive into potholes where you, where you see gang, see gang activity going on and there's shadows in there and I always make fun and I said, you know, I got potholes out in my area where you, you drive in there and you'll see shadows, I said, you know, just joking, we do try and have some fun when we're down there, but I think we're doing pretty, pretty well. You might get a different story from the county commissioners, I'm not sure, but I see a lot of activity, not just going back and forth from the metro, but I've seen a lot of detour signs out there, you know, so there's a lot of roads that are getting replaced. But, you're right, we're going to be, the efficiency is going to be a detriment when it comes to, when it comes to dollars coming in. That's a good thing, I guess, those that don't want emissions, I mean, we all want clean air, but at the same time, we want that road plowed, we, I mean, we don't, we don't want to wait around like we did when you and I were kids, we don't want to wait for three, four days before the plow comes by. They want it done right now and I understand that. Have you got any suggestions, by the way? You can give me some input.
Well, I don't know if I have any suggestions, but these electric cars are like, which people buy?
And that's another thing, I didn't mention that because I, you know, it's, I don't know if it's a Democrat or Republican thing, frankly. If you can afford to buy one, you'll buy one. However, they, you can't wander too far from home in Minnesota because you, you know, you have to find someplace to plug in and you have to spend some time doing it. They are getting some technology now together where you get some fast charges, you know, where you can actually fill up the tank pretty quickly, but.
But, they get a tax credit for buying it, so.
Yeah. I think that's federal, yep. Yeah. Please.
We have been working with MINDA, just give me a quick little lesson on how they're funded and, I mean.
Oh, boy.
I just, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, they get federal dollars, I know they get a lot of, there's a federal tax, you know, that, you know, you, I forget what the federal gas tax is, Commissioner, maybe you can, maybe you know, 30 cents a gallon or?
28.
28 and I think Minnesota is 20.
3.
24, I think, 24, yeah. You know, so that sounds like an awful small amount of money, but it is a lot of money and it, and it comes forward. And where we fight in rural Minnesota, too, is this, this want and this unbelievable supposedly need for rail down in the cities, I mean, it's just, you know, I go down there four months out of the year, live right next, ding, 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 I could hear it at night and there's nobody, there's just nobody in there. Now, when you get over closer to the university, there are some, some riders there, but they want to expand on that and it's, we're saying, no, stay with the buses. I mean, the buses actually, you know, come close to home. If you want to get to the, to the rail, you got to take the bus to get to the rail and it's just a whole different world. So, I forget how many billion they wanted this year for that corridor, but they're also, I've never been on transportation, I wish I, I wish to have, you know, so I know that there's, there's an awful lot of federal dollars that are doled out every year, well, I-94, you know, interstate and this year, too, I forgot to mention, you know, as far as law enforcement, they were, as you know, that there's unions there and they bargain along with the conservation officers and the BCA agents, we're two years behind, we were able to finish that funding mechanism this time, so that, that's a good thing. I think they really got a lot of attention in Minneapolis, as you well know, because everybody had to show up there in their riot gear and even gay ordens, you know, were there. I call them gay ordens because when I was working, they were called gay ordens, but they were even responding and did a marvelous, we think a marvelous job. In fact, I'm not sure how some of them actually did that, but nevertheless, it did happen. There was also talk about how much funding is going to Minneapolis and there will be some dollars that go to Minneapolis, but we did, we did feel, at least in our caucus, that we had to pay for the, to help pay for the public safety portion of that, when they called in the surrounding areas, just so you know that. But, when it come to actually saying, we're going to repair the businesses and do this and do that, we're holding off on that. There's a lot of insurance claims yet and whatnot, too, so, but there was a lot of damage, a lot more damage than there was in Washington DC, by the way, so, just so you know.
Any other questions for the Senator? Anyone in the audience? I'm really opening it up here.
Yes, you are. The media guy's here, too. He's always after me, he was after me, I didn't get back to you, did I, here just lately?
I think you got to preface that, Brent, and say, and say, everyone except Boop. Any questions?
There you go, not the media. No, I talk to the media whenever I get an opportunity and I think the question you had was, I think, with regards to bonding, I think, I think it was, I'm not sure exactly, could have been. But, anytime, I'm always there for those questions and concerns and input, I mean, I really, we really need input because we get caught up in that metro area down there and we get into that thought process and we got to, every once in a while, we got to pull away from that as well as they do us, you know, so it's, it's a two-way, it's a two-way thing, so. All right?
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Yep, yep.
I have number eight is local foods, local places, and we have, we know that this year is this evening.
Yeah, thank you and thanks everybody for having me again. I think I was here in February was the last time I presented on what the Local Foods, Local Places group is doing and just as a reminder, this whole group is sort of rallying around this idea that local foods can be used as a tool for neighborhood revitalization and economic development. So, I was going to talk a little bit about what this group has accomplished, the Steering Committee has accomplished since I last presented because it's quite a lot and I want to be able to keep the lines of communication open about what we're working on and share these amazing success stories. And then I also had a letter that was submitted to you that I believe needed to be approved before it could be submitted with an application that we're working on. So, the first thing I wanted to say was just a big thank you for all the support in, in the local foods, like the farmer's market specifically, any promotion that you might have been doing on behalf of this group, we really, really appreciate it. It's been kind of amazing to see how much conversation and excitement there's been in the community just in the couple of weeks that it's been going. A lot of people are really excited to think about how the space can be used, not only for the farmer's market, but for other sort of potentially like evening events and to really make use of that space. So, that's really exciting and the number of vendors has, has increased as sort of the press around it and the word has gotten out that this exists as an opportunity for people to be selling their local goods. So, that's been really, really cool to see. So, in terms of things that we have accomplished, we were able to submit the virtual tour video that was featured as part of the two-day workshop into a national conference and it was accepted and featured. And so, we actually had two people, the, one of the videographers and then a representative from West Central Initiative, sort of talk about how this video could be used as a tool for planning and that was sort of the idea, it was a planning conference, it was called the Congress for New Urbanism. And so, planners from across the country were sort of learning about what are different ways that people are being creative and how to engage the public. And so, this is one of those things where it's sort of in the face of the pandemic, you know, how are people being creative about how they're involving the public in what they're doing? And so, that was really exciting and I think the goal behind that was really just to kind of put Pelican on the map and, and show that like really cool stuff can happen in small towns. And then the next thing that I wanted to cover was the grant applications that we've been working on. So, we have submitted three grant applications, two of them have been awarded and one of them is pending. One of them that I'm going to mention, that I don't have sort of a full description of to share with you, is for the Beginning Farmer Rancher Development Program with the USDA and this is something that we worked on in partnership with Northern Plains Sustainable Agriculture Society, which is a nonprofit based in Moorhead. And the idea behind this is that we would be working in partnership with them to basically create like a network of farm incubators located in Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota and Wisconsin, based on the New Roots Farm Incubator Co-op Model that this organization has created in Moorhead. And so, the idea behind it is that we would be connecting these sort of farmer facilitators and initiators, it would last for three years. Pelican Rapids was identified as a community and within this whole community action plan, that's a really great place for a farm incubator, to just help people who want to grow food, scale up and sell it into markets. And the farmer's market, now that it's launched, that could potentially be a market channel for them. So, we should find out within the next month or so if we get it. It's a rather large grant and I've been given permission that if we were awarded it, I would actually be able to work part-time, like half-time in managing that grant. And so, that would be within my position with West Central Initiative, but doing a lot of just place-based, place-based community work here in Pelican to just gauge, you know, interest and figure out, you know, what supports are needed in order to make something like that happen. The other one, I actually do have some handouts for because I wanted to be helpful in just sort of sharing information. So, what I've printed out for you are actually the job descriptions of the two positions that we are hiring for that will be starting in August and September. These were the grant applications that were approved. So, we applied for and got a Green Corps member, which is sort of a subsect of AmeriCorps, which is sort of a service position. The person that will be filling this position will start in September and the job description is there of just the different activities that we've outlined that this person would be responsible for. I think I may have also noted somewhere in there who would be supervising, but I just wanted to give you an idea of the kinds of things that we're hoping that this person will accomplish, expanding the community garden. I think there's some branding work around, you know, the community of Pelican and what sort of food things we have to offer to a wider audience. And so, that's really exciting, the idea is kind of that they would pick up actually where Lily would leave off because she's only here with us for the summer. So, she finishes in August and then we would have a Green Corps member starting full-time in September and we're hoping that it's a really nice segue to really continue the work that started and then also build on that with additional projects. So, they'll be, you know, doing some active transportation and sort of active living work with Patrick Hollister, Partnership for Health, who's also been really instrumental as part of the Steering Committee. And in terms of like oversight, myself, Ryan Pesh and Don Finn are all going to be kind of supervising the position, sort of representing the different skills that we can bring to that person. The other position- The other position that I included in the ones that I printed off for you is the AmeriCorps Vista position, so this was a super fast turnaround, and I wasn't sure that we were even going to get it, but this one is also in partnership with Northern Plains, so it's kind of a shared position between Moorhead and Pelican Rapids, and they're going to be serving as a business development coach for emerging farmers. So, basically, walking side by side with people figuring out what are the types of things that you need to be documenting for your taxes so that you can access grants that are specific to farmers, microloans, anything else like that, so that you can scale up and get to a point where you are profitable. And we've identified that as a pretty big barrier, especially for new Americans, so a lot of the farmers that New Roots works with are all like immigrants and refugees, first and second generation immigrants, so a lot of them may not necessarily be familiar with the culture here or how to navigate grants from the Department of Agriculture, and so the idea is really just to provide that one-on-one assistance. I did an interview with one of the potential applicants yesterday, and I'm really hopeful that we can hire her, because she would be a great fit, but the idea would be actually to have them based in Pelican, and then they would be able to drive to Moorhead when needed or serve remotely. And so, what I'm working on now is finding a space for them to work, and I've reached out to Deana Johnson, actually, and Nick Leonard, they have both been in conversation with me about potentially creating like a co-working space at the second level of the Historic City Hall, and because it sounds like they're going to be hiring a number of other people with grant funding that's coming through, and that could be potentially an opportunity to give them a space to work, but then also be around other people so that they can sort of build community among each other. I think some of their other positions are going to be focused on like marketing for the county, and then also broadband access, so it could be a really interesting combination of people. I don't have an official ask on that, because I'm really not sure how that process works, I just wanted to share that with you, because it might be something that needs approval later. So, that was a lot. I have a third thing on my list, which is also to throw out about the commercial kitchen. So, this, I think, was covered really well in the last city council meeting, I think I just wanted to affirm that the Steering Committee is super excited to be working with the park board on the, sort of, the space of the senior center, whether that's in identifying grants or working with the USD architects on whatever information that they need, but we're really excited about that. So, the last item is the Spark application, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context, I think that you have received the letter already, I don't know if you've seen a copy of the application, but just for context, this is something that's a traveling exhibition from the Smithsonian Institution that, in their words, will dive into innovation and invention happening in rural America. The exhibition will travel from 2023 to 2029, sharing these stories with thousands of visitors in rural communities throughout America. So, the potential opportunity here is essentially national coverage for the work that this Steering Committee has done in the community and all the things that they've accomplished over the last year. I think also it's another reason for people to sort of look at small towns and rural places and see them as places that they should move and live to permanently, which I sort of have my own interest in that because of just the work that I do in community development, and I'm super passionate about Pelican and everything that's in this region. So, it says that Spark will spotlight stories of invention and innovation in small towns, both to celebrate rich American heritage of meeting challenges and seeking opportunities in unique ways, and also to provide inspiration for others. So, I think that Pelican has a lot, a lot of inspiration that we can share with others, and I'm hopeful that you will think so, too, and approve the letter that's been drafted, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from anyone?
You know, how big or how put the dollar value of the sales are to the farming market?
Ooh, that is a great one. I know that we're working on metrics, we do have, we have a clicker now, so we're keeping track of how many people are getting there, but I don't think we've asked individual vendors how much they're making. I can just say personally, because I am a vendor, I'm selling flowers, and I made $100 my second week, 90-some my first week, and I brought pretty much that much worth of product, so I've sold everything that I've brought. If I brought more, I think I would sell that much, too. I don't know if that's helpful, but multiply that by 11, and that's probably about how much could be made. I would say it's pretty decent for the size of our town and just the work that I've done with other farmers markets, and from anecdotally, other people I've talked to, they said that the fact that we have 11 vendors already is pretty impressive, so, it's exciting.
Well, we have 11 vendors at the end of the summer, too.
Right, I mean, I think that the, all of the vendors have, in their application at least, they indicated what their availability was, and the hope was, I think, at the sort of initial meeting, was that they would be there through the end of the season, which should be September, I believe, would be when it's probably going to end.
I do know the vendor that sells the VISA, the first two weeks, they sold all their product. I don't know what happened this last week, but they sold out the first two weeks. They were really.
Yeah, yeah. It's been pretty impressive.
Any other questions for Emily? If not, she's looking for us to entertain a motion and a letter of support for partnerships for health, spark application.
We should approve that letter, but we can't, should have already, we've been evacuated, right?
Yes, we want to be evacuated, yes. Now, a motion, is there a second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move down. I have a colleague commissioner here this evening, and item number 19, Don, correct me if I put this heading wrong, classification of city certification of classification as a form of acquisition of HRA.
Yes, you guys, a few weeks back, or council meeting or so back, you approved resolutions that was going to allow Ottertail County HRA to do a project within the city, and that project was to acquire and remove the house at 117 First Street, First Avenue Northwest, across from Payne Johnson right in there, that's kind of falling apart, and part of that process is that they have to, they're asking the council to approve certification that basically shows the county that you're supporting the project, but also that you're clarifying that the project is a non, or the land is a non-conservation land.
Which it is.
So, basically, it's just approving certification of the city, the approval of the classification as non-conservation land, and supporting the acquisition by Ottertail County HRA to do the project.
Commissioner, do you have anything to add?
So, in a sense, I have the motion for you, are we?
You're becoming a.
Mr. Mayor, council members, actually, wanted to hear Senator Henry Ritz's report more than, this is simply, in my opinion, the mechanics that need to happen for the HRA to take on this property, really is what it is. So, I don't know if you're aware, but the Department of Natural Resources has first dibs on any tax forfeit land, and so, no matter where it is, they have first dibs by state statute, so this is basically being done to say to the DNR, which they've already looked at it, this is not conservation land, the city recognizes it at that, and it's just one of those formalities that needs to happen in order for the HRA to keep moving forward. Basically, that's all this is, but, so, I appreciate the opportunity, but that's the simplicity of it all.
So, do you want to?
Yeah, so the motion would be to approve the classification of parcel number 76000990131000 as non-conservation land, and supports acquisition of this parcel by Ottertail County HRA for a housing project.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number nine is West Central Minnesota Drug and Vila Fringe Task Force Drug Powers Agreement, that was in your packet, we have Chief State with us to speak for this this evening, Chief?
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. In your packet, you have the contract with the West Central Drug Task Force. In the past, we, past couple of years, we weren't a member of it, but at this point in time, we, the county has two officers that are deputy sheriffs that are on that team, and they're active, and they're willing to go to work and work with the drugs and those kind of things, and we've been working with them already this week, or last week, I should say, so, as far as a contract with them, it's, I think it's a good thing to be partnership with them. So, any questions?
To approve the contract of partnership with the West Central Task Force?
Yep, Drug Task Force, yes, yep, yep.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
Item number 10, Library Report, which is in your packet. We need a motion to approve this.
I don't have the verbal report, do you have a book, library report, if I missed the name?
I approve the library report. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number 11 is Resolution Number 2021-10, a resolution declaring sufficiency of petition and setting a public hearing on vacation commenced by a petition of a majority of the budding landlords, and that was in your packet. Don?
Yeah, so, basically, I've been working with a property owner that is asking for the vacation of an alley, and also, we've got a petition that was in your packet, a copy of the petition that was signed to the majority of the property owners that bought that alley and street. Up on the screen, the highlighted areas along, that you see there, kind of yellowish color or whatever, is the area that we're talking about, the four property owners. These four property owners here, 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 and here are the ones that were on that petition. I've got signatures from these three, this one I haven't been able to get a hold of, but I don't need to, because we've got the majority already. What we're looking to do is vacate this alley and vacate this street, because, basically, I've asked to do it, but it all kind of was initiated by this property owner wanting to put in a new garage, but that garage basically is going to kind of come into that alley area. On these parcels, what's unique about all four of them is they have land, then they've got an alley, and then they've got another piece of their parcel on the east side of that alley. So, we're going to kind of clean it up, there was no reason to have the alley or the street there, I know this property owner down here has been using part of it for a garden, really nice garden that he's got going on, which hopefully is part of Local Foods, Local Places, but, so, it just makes sense, instead of just vacating that alley on that very north property, it made more sense just to look at vacating the whole thing, vacating that street, it'll never be developed, so. So, the resolution is basically part of the process, we looked over and verified that the petition is sufficient and okay, meets the majority, and so the council needs to set a public hearing, the resolution thereby does that, and the public hearing will be on August 10th. We will be sending letters, we'll be sending a notice to the press, but also sending letters to those budding property owners.
So, I'm assuming that the alley property that is, would, a budding each parcel?
Yes.
We're going to the parcel owner?
Right, because.
What about the street?
The street will actually get divided, typically, I think the way it ends up happening is 33 feet of that 66-foot right away, 33 feet will go to the north, and 33 feet will go to the south. And again, I know the house to the north, the property to the north is Mr. Christensen, and that's kind of been explained to him when he was presented with what we're trying to do and upon him and his wife signing the petition, so they understand.
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-10.
No second, Ed.
Motion and second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number 12 is Welcome Place Letter, just an FYI, it was in your packet, that was a letter that they gave to us in support of a desired search for an economic development personnel for the city. Any comments on that, Council? Hearing none. Let's go down to item number 16, canceled the 27 July 2021 city council meeting, and the reason that's on the agenda, we found out there's going to be four of us in this room that are going to be gone, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Foster, Councilman Strahan, Administrator Soga, and myself, are all going to be gone that day. Sounds like the best meeting to me.
What does this leave me to do, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so, I guess I'm in favor of that.
If we do cancel it, we're going to have to also approve Danielle sending out an email of the council's table listings, we can, the bill's going to be approved.
Yeah, I'll do, just like we did the last time we canceled one, I'll email you the bill listing, and if you have any questions or concerns, you can make a call before I
I move to cancel the 27 July 01 meeting.
What do you say, Ken? Sure. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number 17 is Colony Apartments Pay Request Number Four, Don?
Yeah, Brian reported that they had done that second lift in the markings and stuff up there, out there on the utility project for the Colony Apartments, and Bob Schleeman had submitted a pay request, and this was going to wait until the 27th meeting, but obviously, no, it couldn't, so. So, basically, it's payout four, he's reviewed it, approved it, it's in the amount of $30,339.12. There should probably only be one more when everything is wrapped up, there's still a retained amount of a little over $31,000 still sitting in the account, so, he's recommending payment, I just need authorization to.
I will sign it.
Second, Ed.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number 18 is Resolution 2021-11, which was on our desk when we arrived this evening. Don, do you want to speak for that?
Yes, so, part of Ottertail County slash Pelican Rapids Big Build Project and the housing tax refund program that the council approved last year, we've been trying to make use of that program, and we finally have somebody that applied for a tax rebate, and so, they, the process is they put in the application to the county via Amy Baldwin at the CDA, and that kind of starts the process, then she eventually gets a copy to us. In the city, the way it's working here, though, it's kind of different throughout, from different cities relative to county, but here, we have to have a public hearing, obviously, so do they, but they have to have a public hearing in order to approve a tax abatement like this, so, what I have up on the screen now is the lot, which is part of that parcel is. It's block two, lot one of Lake Region Estates. And we have to hold a public hearing to approve the tax abatement on this. So, the individual then would basically, he's already applied for his, um, his, uh, uh, application. So, it's just a matter of, of going through the public hearing process to get that, the, the ball rolling on the tax abatement. So, um, in the packet, or what I handed you guys was Resolution 2021-11, which calls for that public hearing. And at that time, um, you know, it'll, I think it's classed to come to that public hearing just to answer any questions you might have. But this is exactly what that, that housing program was put together for. And so, hopefully, once this one gets through, you know, a bunch more will come. It would've been a lot easier if we had, um, identified a bunch of, and like I had put together that list of sixty-some residential lots, to potentially just go through and make, have one public hearing on all of them, and we're all done. But, um, in, in the sense that some of them were in the commercial zone, maybe it didn't make sense to do that because then if something else transpired pulling them out of that. So, so I thought, well, we'll just do them as they're presented to us. And this is the first one. So, I would recommend council approve this so we can get another duplex, is what his plan is, to build a duplex there and then we'll be rental property.
What?
Okay, okay. So, um, basically, City Hall, uh, Lake Region, the soccer field's right over here. So, this is basically the old Scott Fox property. Um, Kate Martinez, Rudy, live here. And so, it's just this strip of land right here. It was owned at one time by Faith Church, but I'm not sure who he purchased it from. So, he'll be putting the duplex there and it'll be facing Second Street, not East.
Don, is that a white way?
This right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of an alley. Yeah.
Oh, streets, my, my property is very due to the north, I picture.
West.
And, uh, everyone's property has a alley to nowhere, if you will.
Yeah, we actually have, where the alley goes up this way, there's, um, I think, water or sewer through there too. It goes through that, kind of up towards the, up towards the, the townhouses up there.
Well, I'll move we adopt Resolution 2021-11.
I'll second. Motion second, discussion.
Just comment that this also public hearing is gonna happen on August 10th. We're gonna have one at five o'clock and one at six o'clock, so.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same, motion carried. Item number thirteen, administrator report, Don?
Yep. Since the last meeting, I held a department head meeting and worked with Danielle to set the agenda and be ready for all this stuff. Um, I met with the, the police union, or we had a police union meeting, I should say, negotiation. And then, uh, met with the mayor and, um, Councilman Markraft regarding the next meeting that we're hoping to have within the next couple of weeks meeting. Uh, I met with the mayor and Team Labs. One of the things that we did was we had Team Labs come out and, um, they have a, a, a system of boat that they had purchased that could basically scan the bottom of our ponds. We were interested to see how much sludge we have in them. And so, uh, we met with them and went over our pond sludge reports. Uh, we'll be meeting with West Central Turkeys at some point here in the, in not too distant future to kind of go over things with them a little bit. Because there's some things up there we think that we'd like to, um, do to kind of reduce the sludge in the antelope pond. I attended the 2024 Project Design Meeting. I was here at City Hall with Mindot again. It was in-house, uh, in person. I also had met and had some conversations with school superintendent Brian Corp regarding the soccer field. And just to kind of give you an idea of what's kind of going on there is, um, the school's gonna be having some discussions. And if, depending on the outcome of their discussions, we'll be having some discussions here too about transferring that soccer field over to the school, which we all think would be a good thing. I've met with some, uh, representatives for a business that's interested in the upper floor again. They're continuing to look at that upper floor, uh, area. And, uh, they were here last week and had some electricians and plumbers look at it too, just to kind of get a ballpark of what might, what might have to be done up there to potentially fit a business upstairs. Uh, met with, uh, the city attorney, the new city attorney regarding the street vacation and the soccer field, um, because we're gonna need a little bit of legal work as far. Well, she reviewed the, the resolutions and the stuff that I did for tonight's meeting, but also looked at the potential transfer that we need them for to, uh, transfer the land over. So, we talked about that a little bit. The mayor and I met with Nick Leonard regarding Historic City Hall, with Deena, um, thank you for your time down there, but with Deena Leven. Um, they're looking to hire a new individual. And so, um, they're, they're going through that, or went through that process. And we will be meeting with that person and, and, uh, talking with Nick again about, you know, getting those doors open and, and continuing on with, uh, they're, uh, they're agreeing with, with the county on that. I submitted another application to the capital budget, into, into the capital budget system. And that's why I was asking Senator Inger Ritzon about it because we've actually got two projects in there. One of them is definitely the pool, but I've also got another application in there for funding to put that bridge across our dam when the, when the dam. Um, and so, I worked with Houston Engineering to give me kind of an estimate of what it might cost to get, um, the bridge in there. I've got a bridge price, and then obviously, it needs to be engineered. It needs to be bid out and the whole thing because it's more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, I put that into the system. So, that'll be something that, uh, they'll be looking at next year. Be wonderful if we get funding for both of those projects. Um, I also did, just to mention, um, I, you know, we had put that application into the DNR, DNR outdoor recreation grant for the pool. And I was notified this past week that we did not get funded for the pool through that grant application. So, we'll try it again. Uh, this fall, I think we can apply again. Uh, attended a virtual meeting of Otterton County CDA, like I typically do on a monthly basis. And then, again, working with the CDA in this resident, uh, property owner on regarding the, uh, uh, housing property tax programs and getting him going on, on that. And then spent some time, obviously, you can see, working on the reconfiguration of City Hall. And this is a work in process. Obviously, we can't get sight and sound down here, um, at the drop of the hack. But in reconfiguring this thing to allow for more people to sit and attend the council meetings without them being lined up against the wall, uh, we turned this stuff around. The mics are gone, but the intention isn't to leave the mics gone. We've got this mic, and I know from the past council meetings, it seems like just that mic was enough to pick individuals up setting over there, um, even though the mic was, you know, probably closer to them. But it'll be interesting to see with the conversations we've had tonight. You might hear some comments about the sound was terrible. Well, we expect that it probably will be because we're not mic the way we were before. But it'll be interesting to see how much this mic does pick up. My intent is to, um, continue to reconfigure a little thing, a, a few things. The, the panel here is in an oddball place. You can see it, but those people have a hard time seeing it. I want to get it back over there again, but it's gonna take moving camera around. It's gonna take sight and sound coming and rewiring some stuff to have a camera over there on the opposite corner and then possibly put the screen back over here. We're still playing with that. But I also am looking at the idea of maybe some drop mics from the ceiling in the room to pick up all the noise in the room as opposed to mics in front of all you guys. Because I know there was complaints about the sound quality on some of the mics. And they were so sensitive. If you were too far, it was tough. If you were too close, you were, you know, kind of, um, creating feedback and noise too when people listened to it. So, it wasn't consistent throughout the, the council panel. So, looking at maybe a different system there. We're also waiting to, to do all this in a sense because this is some stuff that the new ARP dollars will pay for, but we don't get them until some, we get half of it in July sometime, and we get the other half of it in a year from now in July 2022. So, um, that's my report.
Any questions for Don? Don, quick question, I had to ask you this. Has the pawn shop former Ash-Will been sold?
Yes, yes, it's been sold.
All the information?
From what we do know about it, um, there's nothing official yet, but we do know about it. But from what I had heard, they were gonna use it as potentially, uh, used car lot, ATV, recreational sale, stuff like that, so, um, that's all I know.
Okay, thank you. Item number fourteen, mayor report a few things I've been involved with last couple of weeks. Uh, June 30th, the conversations with mayor at Historic City Hall. Also, 30th of June, uh, Councilman Markraft, Administrator Solga and I had a police union contract meeting here at City Hall. July 1st, met with Administrator Solga, April service, Team Labs regarding possible bacterial, uh, treatment of the ragoons. This hasn't been decided at this point. Uh, 1st of July, attended the 2024 Complete Street Project meeting here at City Hall. The main emphasis of that was looking at the projected, uh, proposed 108 layout, east and west. 8th of July, met with Administrator Solga, met with her regarding the staffing at Historic City Hall. And then again, on July 8th, met with Councilman Markraft, Administrator Solga, regarding police union contract strategy meeting. And then on the 12th of July, met with Administrator Solga to review the post afternoon City Council meeting. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, seeing no other business on this evening, I suggest that there's a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same. Thank you.
I have a.
Recording.
I have a card on my, my group. Can you hear that?
Oh.